Special meeting for Thursday, July 29th at 1 o'clock is called to order. Ms. City Clerk, can you take world call, please?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Reese English.
Here.
Your pro town Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas.
I'm here.
Thank you so very much.
Ms. City Clerk, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. If you will, please join me. And so when you reply, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
The Republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a closed session. And I believe we have somebody who wants to speak on oral communications. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Oral communications pursuant to government code section 549,54.3. The public shall directly address legislative body concerning items that have been described in the notice of special meeting. Again, we do have one public comment, and it is on item number six. We have Mr. Rubin on the line. Mr. Rubin, go ahead. You've got the attention of the council.
Hi, good afternoon. Name is Ruben Sanchez, president of the North Hawthorne Community Association. I'm calling in regards of item six with the new contract and so on. I'm calling because the North Hawthorne here, we support our code enforcement, our public works, our jailers, and everyone who's covered by the HMEA contract. Because as you know, these are the individuals who pretty much are the ones who are supporting the backbone of our city for many years. Especially now during this pandemic and also during this, uh, these issues that we're having with the homeless. You see public works all the time, working very hard, cleaning up after the homeless. The vagrants that are out there, they're leaving all this trash. These are the individuals who are out there code enforcing daily, working hard, you know, day and night. They're understaffed, but they're out there. We're very proud of what they're doing. The jailers too, that are dealing with a lot of these vagrants that commit crimes and go in jail or at least being held. Be very generous with them. They need the support from all the council, especially not during these trying times. Right now, some of you might know, North Hawthorne, we're going to be getting involved in regards of removing some of these vagrants from our streets. I've been leaving, I've been listening to a name by the name of Romero, Lieutenant Sergeant Romero. And I have not received a call back from this individual. For some reason, I have not received one. So I'll make it nice and public. Romero, give me a call. Because we are going to be addressing this homeless that everyone's calling homeless, but it's not. These are vagrants now. Homeless issue is over because everyone has, there's a lot of resources that we've been spending in the city of Hawthorne. And we've helped a lot of the homeless. The ones that are left over, they're vagrants and criminals, and they're going to be treated as such. And we're going to have to do something about it. So Romero, give me a call. Okay? Have a great day. God bless the city of Hawthorne. God bless you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for your comment. Appreciate your input. All right. Thank you. That is the only public comment that we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, in the absence of a script, I guess, uh, I, uh, we do have one. We're going to move on to the, is there anybody else?
I know. That was all we had in terms of speakers or any written communication. We have nothing further.
Okay, um, so item number five is a city council discussion action item from Councilwoman Reese English.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'm going to request that we actually take item number seven first because we have outside council waiting on this call.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor.
Are you okay? All right. Out of courtesy, if you agree, we'll move forward with the closed session.
So in close, item number seven is a closed sessions conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation against the third party pursuant to California Government Code. Section 549,56.9 subsection CD4 is one potential case M&amp;A Gabeay LLC.
Okay, all right. If there's any, are there any specific, um, public comments for this specific item, Ms. City Clerk?
Uh, there were no comments, uh, that anyone requested to speak on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So if there are no comments, then we'll go into closed session. So we'll, uh, we'll recess for the closed session.
We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home.
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20 plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements or hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can.
We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks.
Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands. Scrub it while you sing this song. Wash, washy, wash, washy, wash, wash your hands and fingers and the places in between. Using soap and water makes your hands so clean. Wash your hands. Reach up, your elbows down. Five, four, three, two, one. Now dry!
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material-type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endanger human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The Organics Law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material-type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
Hum. 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 Ah. 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 Ah.
This call back into session and I would like to refer to our city attorney. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met in closed session. We provided counsel with guidance and status and report. There was discussion and we're coming out with no reportable action.
Okay. We do have another closed session, but I'd like to move on to to our councilwoman, Auntie Reyes English, who has an item on the agenda. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. With regards to telehealth van, I'd like to make an amendment to the contract. The reason for the amendment is to allow an opportunity for UCLA to follow telehealth van and to provide numbers and projections for us on how successful they are in our city and the allowable time currently doesn't do that. So I had asked initially before the contract was even executed and brought to the council for a five-year. I understand that there's folks that have concerns with regards to possibly that time. However, I want to, you know, have an opportunity to have telehealth van available to also provide wraparound services when we talk to about our potential pallet shelter housing. So having said that, I want to ask if we could get a consensus to either allow, if not the five-year, at least a four-year. And if we could do that, you know, effective today if possible, so that they could come in and have that contract signed and be off and running by August.
Um, I'd be willing to support that. I know five years might be a lot for some people, but and two years or three years might not be enough, but four years would be able to give you a good set of data that you can show some type of trend as to what's happening in our city. So I'd be willing to support you.
Thank you. If I could call for the question and if I could get a motion, I make the motion and I could get a second.
Second, second right here. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Um, thank you. Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Montero?
Ms. Montero, you're muted.
I'm just saying that are we voting for four years? That's my understanding?
Four.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Argus?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you, council colleagues Vaughn and Robert Kim, City Attorney. Thank you.
Okay. We have another closed session on the on the agenda for item number six. Correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. So were there any comments from the public, my city clerk?
There were no comments and no email communication was received on item number six.
Okay, so oral communication on this item is closed. So order. We will now recess the city council. We need to conduct a closed session on item number six for a conference pursuant to the agenda at 3:05. We are in recess.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Let me read the item into the record so that the public can have an opportunity to go over it discussing tonight. Thank you. So item number six is conference or labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.68. We do have our interim city manager, Mr. Vaughn Norris, and our interim human resources director, Ms. Irma Yusefi, which is our labor negotiators. And this is regarding and pertaining to the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, otherwise known as HMEA. And again, the only communication we received, Ruben Sanchez.
Okay, so we're adjourned, we're in recess for item number six.
Ah. 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 Ah.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might?
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
We have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm planks. Just because you're at home doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1st, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements or hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing, but all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda on item number six. And City Attorney Kim has a readout of what happened. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item number six, city council was given a status update with a report and the labor negotiator has been instructed.
Okay. If there's nothing further from councilmembers or staff, this meeting is adjourned at 3:28.